Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, July 19, 2010. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion to approve, ma'am.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Staney. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda this morning is under Public Works. We have a resolution requesting acceptance and ownership of public roadways on the state highway system. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. This morning, Georgia Department of Transportation intends to do an intersection improvement at Miller's Mill and 138. Miller's Mill will be realigned to line up with Naomi Drive, which is a private drive. Georgia Department of Transportation is asking the county to accept the newly aligned section of Miller's Mill into its official road system once the project has been built and turned back over to us. So this is a little section of road that got realigned through the old gas station there. Once it's built, project completed, they would like us to take the maintenance back over of that section of Miller's Mill Road.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, I'll entertain a motion on this item. Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to public safety, we have a resolution requesting approval of an agreement for the National Night Out 2010 event. Our presenter is Officer Jason Duffy of the Police Department, Exhibit Number Two. And Mr. Duffy is not here. Mr. Sanders, would you like to present this item, or Latonya?
I will make sure that if we could delay this till tomorrow night, I'll make sure we've got a full report on the Night Out.
All right. Do I have a motion to table this item until tomorrow evening?
No.
We have a motion by Mr. Roark, second by Mr. Staney. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. The next item is under Finance, a resolution requesting approval to amend the ACCG Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County Employees Adoption Agreement. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, Exhibit Number Three. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board. This is a resolution to amend the current ACCG Defined Benefit Plan for Henry County Employee Adoption Agreement. This is a situation where we have a, we had a plan that we started in March, I mean, sorry, July of 2003, and when that plan started, we had elected officials and appointed officials, checkmarked off the ones that we actually had at that time, and those were the only people who were eligible to be a part of that plan from the elected and appointed officials. In January 1 of 2005, we got another appointed official. The public defender's position was put into our plan. We came to the board once before when we were looking at supplemental employees, and he was a supplemental employee, but we did not look at him as a, or look at that position as a appointed position. And in our actual plan document, there is a page that shows all the people that are possibly listed, and that should have been checked off July 1, 2005, and we did not do that, and we are bringing that to the board today to amend this plan, to fix that position, not any people, but a position, as part of this retirement plan. It's the same type of situation as we currently have with other appointed officials and elected officials. So we're just correcting an error.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? All right. If not, you have before you a resolution to amend the Defined Benefit Plan, and Commissioner Bowman will be recusing himself from the vote because his brother is the public defender, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Staney?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, under Social Services, the first item is a resolution authorizing preparation, submission, and execution of the CSBG application for 2011. Our presenter is Ms. Susan Craig, Senior Services Division Director, Senior Services Director, and that's Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning. This is our annual CSBG application that we submit for our in-home services. This year, we were allocated $117,687. This is an additional $35,829 from last year. That's a two-edged sword. That just means our poverty level is higher in the county than in recent years, and they've adjusted it. We have already submitted the documents with the caveat that we would amend the application if the board had any concerns with the way we have already done it.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
I have a comment. This is also on our meals on wheels, and sad to say that Ms. Hinton passed away last night at 101 years old. She was on my wife's route, and we had delivered several to her, but it's a good program. Well, it was late, late in the evening last night, but it's a really good program, and there's a lot of, a lot of needy senior citizens out there that we deliver to, that I don't know that they would get much of a meal if it wasn't for this one, so.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a good program.
You're very right. The fan program was absolutely phenomenal. The public came out and supported us. Don Esch did a wonderful job getting the word out to our corporate friends, and we've actually received enough fans that we could share with some other departments who also knew of needs, and, and we really appreciate the public support. This, these are the people that looked after us as children, and now it's our turn to look after them.
Any other questions or comments?
I don't have any.
Mr. Holder?
I think it's important, too, that when we spend money like this, that the people know where this money is going, and really the condition of the people and the situation in Henry County. And looking at the executive summary, I think it's important to let the people know that we're talking about people here who are about 10% below poverty level, and that there are 3,500 families in Henry County that fall in that category. I think it's important for people to know that, and to know where the tax money is being spent. And is this tax money? Yes, it's tax money. It's in the form of a grant, but somebody pays those grants, and that's the taxpayer. So it's important for people to know that, and to know that we do have that much poverty, even in Henry County. It's flourishing as we've been in the past, and still are. It's important for people to know that.
Any other questions or comments? You have before you a resolution to accept the Community Service Block Grant, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. And you also have the next item, which is a resolution requesting approval of the Aging Subgrant Contract with the ARC for 2010-2011. That's going to be Exhibit Number Five.
Right. This is our actual contract with ARC. This year, we were allocated $594,038. Part of that is a local match, and also the fee for service that we charge. We don't deny service if a person is unable to pay the fee, but we are required to at least assess a fee to them. This helps us to provide home-delivered meals and the personal care in the homes. And this year, we received a little bit less, but as it amends through the year and we get the tax revenue in on the federal level, we probably will match what we received last year, which was about $5,000 more than this year.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have a resolution before you approving the Aging Subgrant Contract between Henry County and the Atlanta Regional Commission. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Staney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Basler. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, under Planning and Zoning Services, the first item is a resolution requesting authorization to submit the annual update of the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element for 2010 through 2014. Our presenter is Mr. Jeremy Gilbert, Planner One, Exhibit Number Six. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. The item that you have before you is the annual update to the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvements Element covering the next five years, from 2010 through 2014. This update was prepared in accordance with the Development Impact Fee Compliance Requirements and the Minimum Planning Standards and Procedures for Local Comprehensive Planning, established by the Georgia Planning Act of 1989 as amended. Planning staff is asking for approval of the resolution and your exhibit books to transmit this document to the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for review. This item will be coming back before the Board of Commissioners in October for adoption to meet the October 31, 2010 deadline for adopting this document. If you do have any questions, I'm here to answer any, as well as representatives from other departments that inputted in this document.
Well, I'll start off. I have a couple of questions, and it's going to be on Page Three of the document, Items Eight and Item Twelve. Item Eight is North Mount Carmel Park. It shows SPOLOST III construction funding $2,120,000, and I'm assuming that is the construction of the soccer fields. Is that correct?
As far as I'm aware of, I can verify that with the capital, SPOLOST's capital, and make sure that that's exactly what that is, because that's the only thing I'm aware of that's going on out there at this time.
If you look down on Item Twelve, it also has an item, Soccer Complex, and it has $3 million set aside for that, and it says Pending Funding. That's the same thing that's going on at Mount Carmel Park. It was my understanding, too, that we put $2 million in for the soccer complex, but should we have two separate items to reflect the same, same project?
If it's the same project, no. And I'll verify with the SPOLOST Capital, the Capital Department, and make sure that those are the same line items. Most of the items that are in here are carried over from what was last year's project, showing what was in last year's Short Term Work Program. And if any of these items have been combined or anything, we can definitely notate that.
Well, I know that in some of the resolutions that we passed pertaining to the soccer complex, there was about $1.7, $1.8 million in Mount Carmel Park. The soccer money was transferred from SPOLOST III to North Mount Carmel Park for the soccer field construction. That $1.7, $1.8 million was then transferred out of that park into the Jonesboro Road Park, and there's no listing on here for John, for the Jonesboro Road Park, and I didn't know if that needed to be added as well.
What we can do, Madam Chairman, is check with the capital side of SPOLOST, because what we asked them to do is to provide us with a copy of capital projects for the next six years. And if that is a project that they want to proceed with within this timeframe, then yes, you are correct, it should be added. I mean, looking at the information that Rocky has, it appears that North Mount Carmel has $120,000 allocated just for North Mount Carmel Park. And then for the soccer complex, it is $2 million, so it should be about a total of the $2,120. What we can do is if those projects are to occur at the same time, just mesh those two together, and then just put one amount forward. But we will verify that the Jonesboro Road project is something that they want to undertake, even if it's just right-of-way acquisition or anything at that point, and then we can add it before we transmit it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board member with a question or comment?
Chairman, I will say that Jonesboro Road Park originally was the SPOLOST project, as you just mentioned. The money that we moved from North Mount Carmel to Jonesboro Park was not SPOLOST money. It's capital projects money, and I don't know that SPOLOST would be, they should be aware of that, but they may not have incorporated that into this program. And I do believe this $3 million number on the soccer complex is really the Jonesboro Road, and it shouldn't be three million. It should be like 1.4, 1.5, and I'll make sure that that gets corrected as well. I'll make sure I talk with them, too.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to transmit Short Term Work Program Annual Update, and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Holder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Staney. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a public hearing. Zip and Debbie Hinton of Locust Grove, Georgia, request an amendment to the ULDC to allow private airstrips outside of a flying community in the RA Zone District. Our presenter is Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning. That's going to be Exhibit Number Seven, and this item was an item that was tabled from last month's meeting. Good morning.
Good morning. As Madam Chairman has indicated, this request was actually postponed by the board in May of this current year. At that time, when staff brought the request forward, there was just a recommendation by the zoning advisory board to not go with the requests as requested by the applicant. The zoning advisory board requested that for any private airstrip that comes in, the applicant would be required to submit a, submit an application for conditional use, and then obtain some type of approval from the FAA. Since that time, staff has done some more research, looking at adjacent counties, just trying to see what their regulations were, and also re-verifying with the FAA that they do not require any type of specific permit or permissions. What you all should have in front of you are two resolutions. The first resolution is the recommendation as it was presented by the zoning advisory board. And then the second, second resolution is an alternate resolution, which actually provides for some supplemental standards for those applicants wanting to actually come in and submit a conditional use for a private airstrip. Since you all have received your books, there have been some changes to the resolution, more particularly Condition Number Five, or Supplemental Standard Number Five, Seven, and Eight. For Number Five, under Aircraft Maintenance, staff has just added a sentence that aircraft maintenance will be permissible as long as it is for use by the private property owner. So that has been changed. On Number Seven, the condition shall now read, "A maximum of two airplane hangars may be allowed even in the absence of a primary structure." So that has been added as Number Seven, and then Number Eight has been deleted in its entirety. If you should have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
I have one. A couple of questions, and I'm proud to see the, the work that's been done on this. Do we currently have any airstrips in Henry County that is less than 10 acres?
Not that I am aware of. And the reason I say that is because right now, the way the ordinance is written, we only allow private airstrips if they are part of a fly-in community. So...
So you're not aware of that one? Okay.
No, sir.
Okay. And also, Condition Number Five, and I couldn't understand how you could not allow aircraft maintenance if someone flew in and was having problems. I guess they'd have to tow the airplane somewhere else to have it repaired. It was brought up also about the permit that the FAA and GDOT would give, and that they don't do that, but there are certain guidelines and requirements, and I see you've addressed that one. Also, Condition Number Seven, where we were talking about accessory structures. Accessory structures means it has to be a principal structure, and the guy could have 10, 20, 50 acres next to him, and the house be located on the other piece of property.
Correct.
So he couldn't build a hangar on that subject property. So I'm glad to see that one corrected. And Number Eight, it was very ambiguous, to the point that it could mean anything as far as being compatible. So I think you've done a lot of work on it.
Thank you, and I also want to thank the county attorney, because she was very instrumental in helping me pull all this together.
Any other questions or comments?
I have just one. On Item Number Seven, "A maximum of two airplane hangars may be allowed as an accessory structure to any approved conditional use." Is there any, was any thought given to possibly having a square footage, maximum amount of square footage for that particular, for those particular hangars, or can you construct, you know, 100,000 square feet of hangar? Did you look at that at all?
Latonya and I actually talked about this, and neither one of us are any type of experts in this area, so we were kind of going back and forth. And I think the whole idea, to answer your question, we did look at that. But the, the challenge with that is, I think the hangars are based on the size of the actual plane that you're going to be flying in. And of course, I don't know if there is a minimum or maximum, and that's something, I know the applicant is here, that maybe, he may be able to add a little more information to it, but we did look at that, I guess, ma'am. And we threw out, too, just to kind of have some control over not having 10 or 20 airplane hangars, and not making it look as if it's some type of commercial business.
Yeah, that, that would have been my concern on that one. Of course, we know that plane size are going to be limited by the fact that it's going to be an unpaid airstrip, so that, that within itself controls that. But if you, if you have 40 planes, I wish we had someone with the finances to own 40 planes in Henry County. They would be paying a lot of taxes, I'm sure, but, you know, I just thought that might be something we might want to give consideration to. And the applicant may be able to give us some insight into that, as you said. The other question I had, and this was under an ordinance that Coweta County has in place pertaining to airstrips, and one of the things that they use in consideration for that is the proximity of the airstrip to hospitals, schools, churches, and similar institutions which involve a concentration of persons. Is that, is that an issue that we need to look at as well, or... That's on the very last page of the suggestions. Yes, I'm with you. It's under Coweta County, Item Number Four.
And I think that is something what we can do, because we have supplemental standards now. We'll probably need to come up with a set of criteria for evaluating these requests, so that is something that we can add as a criteria point.
Okay. And you will do that later, once you get your, your vetting process together or whatever?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. All right, since this is a public meet, well, I guess at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant or their representative if they would like to come forward. And if you would, state your name for the record. We'll give you 15 minutes.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. Andy Welch here, representing Zip Hinton, in this request to modify the zoning ordinance of Henry County. We've reviewed the conditions as proposed by staff. These will be supplemental development standards for any conditional use. And as the board's aware, that when a conditional use goes to the zoning advisory board for review, there are the standards for a conditional use that may be expressly stated under that particular conditional use. In this case, would be airstrips, private airstrips. In addition, there are set standards by which you judge all conditional uses. And part of that, part of those requirements is to look at the surrounding area and the community to determine whether or not that conditional use fits that particular area. And in many, in many cases, it may not. So in some cases, it will. And so on a case-by-case basis, as they're reviewing each request for conditional use, the zoning advisory board will then have to evaluate that on a case-by-case basis, take into consideration all the surrounding area, and what those impacts may be. In this particular conditional use for private airstrips, you'll have, these are extra supplemental standards that will apply to the development of the airstrip in a manner that is designed to try and minimize its impact on the adjacent properties, as well as to prevent it from being utilized in a manner that was not intended, such as for, for commercial purposes. So these standards we've looked at, we think that they are with the modifications that Sherry has recommended. We think that those are acceptable. I will just draw your attention to the condition on buffer requirements. We do think that a buffer requirement makes sense. We would suggest that it be left up to that body, the zoning advisory board, to determine the nature of the buffer, the size and location of the buffer, so that it's put in a place that actually screens off the airstrip and the hangar from a, from the public view. And the reason why I say that is because if, if it's just an airstrip, and you're just, you're going to buffer off that airstrip, that makes sense on a smaller tract of land. But if you have a large tract of land, someone that is engaged in agricultural purposes, maybe has a cattle farm there, the way this is written, you'd have to actually buffer the entire property line. So that the entire 100 acres of cattle farm would then have to be put in a buffer around the entire property. So the entire property boundary would have to be put in a buffer, just because you put an airstrip in the middle of it. So that was the only comment that we had about the conditions, and we thought that it'd be better to do a buffer on a case-by-case basis. We thank you for your time, and we'll take any questions you have.
Does any board member have a question for the applicant?
Madam Chair, I have one.
Mr. Staney?
Mr. Welch, I was reviewing the Cowetos. There were, it says 55 acres, but when you think about a 2,500-foot runway, and you put a 100-foot buffer around the perimeter of that, you've chewed up about approximately seven or eight acres, that 10 acres already, correct?
That's right.
The number that keeps coming to my head is 15. Does your client have a problem taking it, going from 10 to 15?
No, sir.
I feel strongly about the buffers, because even though there might not be somebody there with a house or livestock today, if he, just because he would be the first one in, we still do need to protect the property rights of the person next door, too. So that would be my suggestion, is to change that 10 to 15. If you're all right with that, I would make that proposal. I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but I just want to make sure you all are right with it before I proposed it.
That's fine with us.
Okay.
Mr. Holder?
Another comment that I have. I know we're looking at this as, as totally different, and in a sense, it is. But the type of landing strip we're looking at here is, is for a hobby, aircraft lover. We have, we have, currently, we have people that do motorcycles, but they do cars. And you would be surprised that even cattle, I know it was mentioned about cattle, how many, how many cattle are raised in this county as a hobby? You'd be surprised with the numbers. I do know what those numbers are. Even though it is different, it's still the same in the fact that it is a hobby. Am I correct, Mr. Hinton?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, what we're talking about is not anything commercial. It's, it is certainly a hobby. As far as 15 versus 10, I don't have a problem. I understand exactly what Mr. Staney is saying. I think the key to it, though, is that this is being a conditional use, and that each case that comes before us will be reviewed, such as the churches, the places of concentrated gatherings, churches, schools, hospitals. All of that will have to be reviewed by the board before that conditional use could be granted. So again, I want to thank the staff, and also the applicant, for their willingness to work, the attorney in crafting this to where it's workable for all, because even though I don't know how to fly an airplane, obviously, some people do, and they love it, and it's a good hobby. So just wanted to say that.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say that I agree with all of the changes that were made, and also with what Mr. Welch just said about this body, or the ZAB, or whoever's appropriate, being allowed to help have some leeway on the buffer, because as he said, you don't want it to where, you don't want to make a guy buffer his whole 200 acres because he's got an airstrip on one side of it. So I don't know, you know, however that needs to be worded, so that it's legal and everything like that, but I agree with his principle that, you know, protect the folks who are next door to the airstrip, but not necessarily the whole giant piece of land. However that needs to be addressed, I think, I think that would be the way to go.
Any other questions or comments? If not, since this is a public hearing, I'm going to, at this time, call for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? All right, if not, at this time, I will look to the board for a motion on this item.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve it with the nine conditions, but change Number One, for the minimum acre shall be 15 acres. And we're taking, we have struck in Number Eight, so it'll be a total of nine conditions.
All right, and also with the changes that were referenced by staff?
Correct. Condition Number Five and Seven.
Five and Seven modified.
And it should be actually eight conditions. If we're going to delete Number Eight, then that would take it to eight.
Okay. Can I say nine?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Strike eight and still say nine.
We have a motion on the floor to approve by Mr. Staney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Officer Duffy is here, so we want to back up on the agenda, and I need a motion to amend the agenda to add the resolution requesting approval of an agreement for the National Night Out 2010 event. Motion by Mr. Staney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Basler. All in favor? The motion carries five zero. At this time, Exhibit Number Two, we will look at the public safety resolution. Good morning.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. I apologize for my tardiness. I've had 18 police cars come in, had to coordinate with the radio systems in it. So thank you for amending this for the National Night Out. The National Night Out, I believe, is very important to the county. I, since 2005, I've helped coordinate the National Night Out. It's a big community event. I think it's important to have the citizens meet, meet and greet their local police officers, not only for Henry County, but also for local city agencies, such as City McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove Police Department, and also our fire... such as City McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove Police Department, and also our fire, all our other public safety, such as the fire department, our hero units, and our military and armed forces. Since I've been doing this, this is the first time I've had it come before you. But I know one of the things is Henry Town Center requires is a certificate of insurance. And Mr. Sabine has helped me in the previous years, but I understand he's not here anymore. And one thing they just required was is that we have medical emergencies out there, which we will have the ambulances out there, on scene, the fire EMS. We'll have law enforcement. We'll have... It's going to be a hot day, so we will have plenty of water and food. Everything's free. Nobody can charge anything. We will have a local ban there, which at this time, I'm not sure which ban it's going to be, but it's going to be a Christian ban. This is a family night out, something that everybody can enjoy. And we're going to have a... We're going to probably have over a hundred law enforcement out there. So, as far as safety and our security, I think we'll be fine. But I just need approval for the certificate of insurance, and also approval for the county to participate in this.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
I have a question. I have a comment. We've been to... My family have been to... I think we've been to all of them. And it's really a unique experience for those who haven't come, they need to. We have state patrols there. They bring their helicopter out. There's a lot of law enforcement, public safety. There's a lot of vendors there that bring things out for people to try. There's churches and other organizations come out and bring water and other things. It's a really unique experience. If you haven't done it, you should do it. You'll enjoy it. I guarantee you, you'll enjoy it. It's an interesting night, and there's a lot of kids there. A lot of kids come out. I know that the Henry County FOP passes out school, pencils, papers, pads, backpacks. They put on a pretty good display of passing out free for kids fixing to start school. That's just prior to school starting. So, it's really very worthwhile.
Well, we have an opportunity, too, for several of our other departments to be there and showcase what they're doing in the community, too.
Our cert department is also there. Don Ash is there, and he promotes our cert department.
Parks and Rec usually has a booth there as well.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd second all those comments. I'd also like to say, I think it's a good idea that you moved it from August to September, because it's a little bit cooler.
Exactly.
Because I went the first few years, and it was pretty steamy, but it's still a lot of fun.
Well, they always want this on the first Tuesday in August. And last year, they were going to switch it to September. The southeastern part of the United States complained because it's a lot hotter down here. And so, then people up north complained, so it was going to be a little bit colder up there. So, they kind of tilted the wheel a little bit that way, and they changed it back. But a lot of southeastern parts are doing it in September, where it's a little bit cooler. So, we're going to do it on... And plus, what I'm... The issue was that Tuesday was always the next day of the second day of school, and that was very tough on the parents, because trying to get organized, and also the teachers. So, I think by moving it to September made it a little bit better as far as the weather, and also have the teachers and the students and the parents a little more organized. And we always have a great event. We usually have about three thousand people come through.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution to authorize the license for space agreement and approve the National Night Out 2010 campaign. I'll entertain a motion.
Salute.
We have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Moving on to SPOS, we have a resolution requesting approval of a professional services agreement for the Hudson Bridge Road project. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOS Transportation Project Director, and that's exhibit number eight. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. Hudson Bridge Road is a designated SPOS III transportation project. An agreement for professional service in the amount of $10,000 is requested to assist with the construction of related issues to accomplish survey and design services for revisions to accommodate existing facilities, also for verification of information and review of proposed field changes provided by the contractor. This agreement for professional services will be issued to McGee Partners, the design engineering firm of Hudson Bridge. Funding for this professional service is available within the project budget.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution to approve an agreement for professional services for Hudson Bridge Road. This lies in District Two, and I'll entertain a motion.
Salute.
Motion by Mr. Roark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bazler, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of professional services agreement for the Eagles Landing Parkway project. That's exhibit number nine.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is for Eagles Landing Parkway, which is also a designated SPOS III project. An agreement for professional service in the amount of $30,000 is requested to assist also with the construction of related issues to accomplish survey and design services for revisions to accommodate existing facilities, also for the verification of information and review of proposed field changes provided by the contractor. This also... This agreement is also will be issued to McGee Partners, who is the designing firm of Eagles Landing.
Are there any questions or comments about this item?
Madam Chair, where's the funds coming from again?
It's coming out of the SPOS III.
Thank you.
You have before you a resolution to approve the agreement for professional services for Eagles Landing Parkway. This is in District Four, and I'll look to you, Mr. Bowman, for a motion.
Madam Chair, approve.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a supplemental agreement for the East Atlanta Road at Panola Road project. And again, Mr. Rocky Romero is our presenter, exhibit number ten.
Yes, this is for the East Atlanta Road and Panola Road project, which is also a SPOS III transportation designated project. Staff is requesting approval of a supplemental agreement for the design revisions of roadway and eastman due to roadway negotiations and also utility relocations. The request is for $2,700, of which $1,200 is for the revised revision of plans and legal description, and $1,500 is for the revision of final plans. Funding for this supplemental agreement, it is available within the project budget.
Any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a supplemental agreement, and this lies in District Five, and I will entertain a motion.
Let me just approve that, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Bazler, is there a second? Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a joint public-private venture for the intersection improvement of Rocky Creek Road at Hampton Locust Grove Road, and that's exhibit number eleven.
Under SPOS III projects for District Two, there was allocation for projects within with a private joint venture allocation. Rocky Creek at Hampton Locust Grove Road is in need of this transportation improvements. Since Henry County Board of Commission has the interest in promoting the general health, safety, and welfare of the community as it relates to infrastructure improvements, a cooperative venture between the Henry County Board of Commissions and Polty Homes Corporation has been identified. This joint venture clearly meets and defines a public need. Polty Homes Corporation has agreed to jointly venture with Henry County through a monetary contribution of $50,000 in said intersection improvements. With this resolution, the board will enter into public-private venture with Polty Homes Corporation and accept the monetary contribution of $50,000 for this joint venture.
Is this the corporation, this building in Sun City?
That's correct.
That's a very dangerous intersection that I'm sure is going to benefit not only Spalding County, but Henry County. We've had quite a number of accidents there. Any questions or comments pertaining to this resolution?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder.
May I direct this one at the attorney? I know in the past, when we talked about public-private ventures, it's never been to this level. Is this new, that it's identified in that manner?
This is something that I recommend, because it gives the county the assurance that we'll get the money. It gives the entity, the private entity, assurance that the money will be used for the purpose for which it is given. And I just think it's cleaner and better for us to have a written document memorializing this understanding.
I think it's a somewhat good idea. The... When do we receive the funds? Or is there anything in the agreement that says when we get...
It does say in the agreement.
It does. Let me... Well, there is a... I'm looking at paragraph two. There is a on-number-four date. That's a blank date. And I think we were going to put in... We're going to wait to see what the board... When this was going to be approved by the board. So, we certainly can put by the end of the week, or insert whatever date that we want to. Polty has already agreed to the substantive terms of this agreement. So, it's just a matter of semantics as to what date we want the money in our conference.
I think that's good, because we all know that we've had agreements such as this, with it not defined, in two years, three years down the road, either the company's out of business or something, and we don't end up following through and getting the commitment from the people. So, I think that's good, and that's the reason for my question.
We've started to learn from... That's a mistake. I don't know what's going on.
I understand completely.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution to approve a joint public-private venture for the intersection improvement of Rocky Creek and Hampton Locust Grove Road, which lies in District Two, and I'll look to Mr. Roark for a motion.
Salute.
Motion by Mr. Roark to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. Rocky, I think this meeting's all about you today.
Just about.
The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a budget amendment transferring funds from Hudson Bridge Road to Rocky Creek Road and Hampton Locust Grove Road, and this is exhibit number twelve.
Yes, Madam Chair. As you can see, on our private joint venture, we only have $1,125,000. In addition, with the Polty, $50,000, we're still going to be a little bit short to be able to complete this project. So, this resolution is a budget amendment in the amount of $1,082,950.90, with the needs to cover the construction and related costs. And as you mentioned, the funding will be coming out of the Hudson Bridge savings. SPOS III also.
This is a transfer from a District Two project to a District Two project.
Correct.
Are there any questions or comments about this item?
Just so it's clear for people watching this at home, this does not affect the Hudson Bridge project negatively in any way.
No, sir. No, sir.
That project came in below estimated cost. All right, you have... If there are no questions from the board, you have before you a resolution to approve a budget amendment transferring of funds from Hudson Bridge Road to Rocky Creek and Hampton Locust Grove. And this, again, is in District Two, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Salute.
Motion to approve by Mr. Roark, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for the construction of the intersection improvement of Rocky Creek Road and Hampton Locust Grove Road. That's exhibit number thirteen.
Seal bids were solicited for construction of the intersection improvements. We received nine seal bids and reviewed them. Staff recommends the low bidder, Georgia Asphalt Incorporated, incorporated in the amount of $1,772,632.85. And of course, now we do have the funding for this project.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item?
How long is it? Can you finish on this?
We're paying twenty... I mean, sorry, ten months for construction. So, we should start within a month, since all this has been...
So, this time next year, it should be done.
By this time this year should be, weather permitting.
Well, sure.
Mr. Holder.
Rocky, on the construction of this intersection, that does include the taking down of that hill?
Well, yes, sir. On the east side. On the east side, and signalization also.
Signalization, okay. Just wanted to be sure, because that is a very dangerous intersection. A lot of vaderex have occurred there, and it's certainly time that it's corrected. Plus, the school's gone in there, too.
One of the things we decided to do on this particular intersection is that we know in the future that Hampton Locust Grove Road is proposed to be a four-lane. And when I was the District Two Commissioner, we had the discussion, do we do the quick fix and just put up a red light, or do we go ahead and build this intersection the way it would be utilized once that's a four-lane road? And it seemed that it was really, even though it's going to be a little more costly to do it that way, it will save the taxpayers' money in the future and make for a much safer intersection. So, we opted to go with the version that would be for the future widening of that roadway. So, I'm definitely glad to see this one get underway. Mr. Roark, that lies in your district. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Bowman.
Rock Quarry Road Bridge, what are we going to... Do we have our drawings completed?
We did receive our final drawings on Thursday, this past Thursday. We still have to get an agreement with the railroad. We couldn't finish that agreement, because we needed the final set of plans in order to find out the cost or estimate the cost of the bridge, since the railroad is going to give us a five percent of... Since we're going to be closing the railroad crossing, they're going to contribute to the can for that project, five percent of the crossing closure. We did receive the final plans. We are talking to property owners. There's about eight parcels out there. So, we should, you know, once we acquire the roadway and, of course, the agreement, the most important part is the agreement with the railroad, we should be putting out for bid. So, hopefully, I hope by September, we're going to actually put it out for bid and start construction thereafter, maybe October.
September.
September, yes, sir. Because August is just around the corner.
Just a couple of months off, okay.
Just a little bit off, you know, because of the railroad, you know. We needed... If we didn't have to have that agreement, we could have probably put it out a little bit earlier, but...
Well, I understand. I've gotten a number of calls, because I have had several little town hall meetings and some other things about that bridge. And I just wanted to make it clear for the public, you know, there's a lot more to it than just building a bridge. There's a lot of people that we're having to deal with, especially the railroad.
Another thing that I forgot to mention, also Georgia transmission. There's a Georgia transmission power line through there, and we have to relocate it. There's ten poles. So, we've been working with them, and also Georgia Power. So, we've got two big utilities that they're going to have. And we met last week with them, and I got to talk to you about that. But I think... The way we've planned it is, we're going to be able to incorporate their design on ours. So, we'll be actually going at the same time according to eastman. So, we're not waiting on one versus the other. So, should expedite the roadway a little bit better.
So, if we put it out for bid in September, we're looking for openings or awards sometime in October.
October, yes, sir.
And starting probably the worst time of the year in the wintertime. That's okay.
Or October. You know, it all depends how fast we can... We expedite it, you know. We can open it and do a walk-on.
That's fine. That's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you, Rocky.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. County Manager, any comments for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Did anyone sign up for public comment? The upcoming meetings and events tomorrow, July 20th, at 6:30 p.m., is a regular board meeting. Thursday, July 29th, at 9:00 a.m., we have a called meeting. Monday, August the 2nd, is at 9:00 a.m., is a work session. Tuesday, August 3rd, at 9:00 a.m., is a regular board meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of personnel pending or potential litigation and land acquisition.
Salute, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey?
Second.
Second by Mr. Roark, all in favor.